Town Council Regular Meeting. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselors Bordelon. Here. Baumgutter.
Here.
Franco.
Here.
Head.
Here.
Melendez.
Here.
Aubrey.
Counselor Aubrey? She is here. She was talking.
Yeah, she is. Counselor Parker?
Here.
And Counselor Superior is not here yet. So you have eight, which is more than a forum.
Great. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States.
States of America. To the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, in the law. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Recognitions, awards, and memorials. We have none this evening. We are on to Roman numeral four, public hearings. And what's going to happen is, Madam Clerk will read the call to public hearing, and then Mr. Reiner will give us a very brief overview as to the purpose of the public hearing this evening. So, Madam Clerk, please.
A town of Groton notice of public hearing, April 7, 2020. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-163E, a public hearing will be held by the Town Council of the Town of Groton, Connecticut, on April 7, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the Community Room 1 at the Groton Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, to receive comments on the proposal to sell the William Sealy School property. This was dated on March 23, 2020, and also on April 1. It's required to run twice in the newspaper, which it did.
John Reiner is on the line, and there's a couple of comments to kick off, if that's okay?
Yes, please. Mr. Reiner, if you could give us a brief overview as to the purpose of this public hearing this evening, please.
Sure. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Good evening. So, as the town clerk mentioned, consistent with Section 7-163E, all town properties that are valued over $10,000, the town has to hold a public hearing on the sale of the property. It does not have to do with the proposed use of the property. It's more for the purpose of the fact that the town is going to be selling the property itself. The town does have a very standardized process that we take all of our development proposals through for the sale of properties. I can give a very brief overview of how we do that, if that would be helpful.
Yes, please.
So, for development processes, the first thing that we do, once the council has directed the town staff that we want to market the property as excess for future development, we market the property for many months in print, at trade shows, social media, webpages, and issue it out to industry experts and developers. We then issue an RFP for at least 60 days. The RFP requires a concept and site plan to show the fiscal ability for a project, the developer's track record, the ability of the developer to complete the project in a timely manner, estimated total project cost, and offering to the town, abatements if requested, and does not require bids on items like demolition, but generally a rough cost estimate for something like a demolition, and even a rough cost estimate for what the project is expected to cost with projected tax revenues. Then we receive those proposals. We put together an interview committee, which usually is comprised of both staff, as well as members of the town council. The interview committee meets and reviews the proposals. We then select a certain number of proposals that will then have actual interviews with those responsive bidders. We'll usually have a second round of interviews with some of the finalists. We'll then have a final interview with what we usually take as the preferred developer. The interview committee will then meet again and make a recommendation to the town council for a preferred developer.
Hello?
Oh, we can't hear you now. Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Leanne, we can hear you now. Can you hear us?
Would you like me to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry. Then, when the interview committee makes a recommendation on the preferred developer status, the preferred developer selection criteria usually includes looking at the proposed use. Yes.
Yes.
Turn your volume up. Okay.
The developer experience, the financial benefit to Groton, financing, ability to execute, and to schedule. The town council then generally meets with staff and the interview committee in executive session. The town council then meet with the preferred developer in executive session. Staff and the development team create an option and/or purchase and sales agreement once the town council meets with that preferred developer and directs staff to move forward. At that time, the prices negotiated, any financial incentives that are negotiated, and any contingency plans. The development team, the actual developer, may hold a public meeting outside of town council meetings. The development team will then present with staff to the town council in a public forum their plans with some type of an option agreement. And if the development agreement or option agreement is approved, the developer then begins their due diligence. The developer will then present a revised site plan to the town council prior to any regulatory submissions. The developer would then go through our normal planning and zoning and other regulatory processes. And once the regulatory processes are approved, the developer would generally purchase the property and close on the property. Are there any questions about the purpose of the public hearing or the process that we take in marketing and selling these properties?
Any counselors have any comments or questions for Mr. Reiner? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Mr. Bert, I'm going to let you handle recognizing the people that have signed up to speak with us this evening.
Sure. I would just like to make sure Counselor Aubrey can hear at this point. Counselor Aubrey, thumbs up if you can hear us. Counselor Aubrey, can you hear us? I could put her on, try to put her on my speaker, on my phone, if you would like, so she can participate that way. Do you want me to try that?
Sure. Looks like she's troubleshooting.
Yeah.
I think she's trying to go.
I'm just going to continue on.
Bear with us, please. For those of you listening at home. Technology is great.
Okay, don't. Let's see if this works, okay? Oh, I think it's gonna be reverb. That's not, this isn't gonna work either. You don't, you don't see, um. Okay, good, good. Well, you can, okay. Well, I think we're gonna have to continue on. So I will, first on the list is Mr. Suarez. Mr. Suarez, I'm getting ready to, okay, Mr. Suarez, he just needs to unmute. He's been allowed to talk. Okay, there he goes.
Mr. Suarez, if you could, please just state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for putting on this tonight. John Suarez, 166 Grove Avenue, Groton, Connecticut. Um, I went to the initial meeting for this again, this year, the meeting in the PR. It was a worry. Um, and I apologize. If you can hear that. I really, my main concern about this is the size and scope of the project, one. And two, possible traffic issues on Walker Hill Road and Grove Avenue and Fairview Avenue, which is below Grove Avenue. Grove Avenue connects to, under the Gold Star Bridge. Two, I'm also concerned about the future. Who's gonna be taking over this? Who's gonna be the site manager or the apartment manager, if you will? And are they gonna keep it, upkeep it, or is it going to decline? Like so many of the big, big establishments around here that seem to, they start off nice and they seem to decline. But that's what I have for tonight. Thank you for providing me with the way to talk to you folks. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suarez. We appreciate you calling in and being with us this evening. Mr. Bert, who do we have next? You're muted.
Next up is Mr. Thomas Potter. I'm about to hit "allowed to talk." He, you should be able to mute now, Mr. Potter.
Good evening, Mr. Potter. Thank you for joining us. Please state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have five minutes, sir.
My name is Thomas W. Potter. I live at 154 Walker Hill Road in Groton, Connecticut. You have two comments, email comments from me concerning this proposed project. Tonight, I would use my time to pose maybe three questions. One to Mr. Bert, one to Mr. Reiner, and one to Counselor Franco. The question that I have for Mr. Bert is whether or not the town has requested a current estimate from Public Works for the demolition and restoration of the William Sealy School Building. I don't want him to respond now because that would eat into my time. I would also ask whether or not the proposed agreement to sell this 14 acres to Donmar Corporation for a dollar represents what I would call an arms-length transaction. Mr. Bert may not be able to answer that specifically, however, Counselor Aubrey could probably help him out because she has immense experience in the real estate matters, and she could probably explain what I mean by the arm-length concept. In terms of another question, I would ask Mr. Reiner, who was good enough to send me a copy of the proposed demolition and restoration estimate that Donmar obtained from a company called Standard Demolition Services Incorporated. It's dated March 7, 2019. It's addressed to Donmar Companies, and it concerns the former William Sealy property. And they make a base bid of $2,099,235. My question is, was this specific amount ever disclosed to members of the town council? Because I find no reference to this specific amount in any of the minutes of the meetings of either the town council or the town council committee, the whole. My second question concerning this specific proposal from Standard Demolition Services is it listed under paragraph C a number of exclusions? And actually, there are 14 exclusions. And I'm wondering if you might explain to me what the word exclusion means? I asked that question of a representative from Donmar, and they told me it was standard industry practice. Well, that doesn't really tell me anything. My third question would be to Counselor Franco. Did you know of the base bid submitted by Standard Demolition Services when you made comments, I believe, last month during a town council or town council committee, the whole meeting? Were you more or less surmised, I think that's the term you used, that the demolition and restoration would be substantial? And that, in effect, represented the justification for the $1 selling price of 14 acres of town-owned property? I guess I need to know whether or not you understood exactly what the town was basing that $1 selling price on. I have no more questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Potter. Mr. Bert, who's next on the list to speak?
Just one second, please. Lynn Gaul is next, and I am going, okay, she has been enabled to speak. She just needs to unmute.
Thank you. Ms. Gaul, if you could, please just provide your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak. Thank you.
Sure. This is Lynn Gaul. I'm at 35 Belivens Street in Groton, off Grove Avenue. I came to the meeting, I think it was back in February, saw the site plans. Um, I am concerned about the traffic on Grove Avenue, since I live off of that, and I live in that little neighborhood that we like to keep together. Obviously, with everything going on today, we see a lot of people walking. So there's a lot more foot traffic in our neighborhood. I'm also concerned about that coming from this site. I did walk through the area, because I was interested in the 14 acres. The plans that we, you know, that I had looked at on the board look like if that is what they do, would be beneficial. But I do have also the same concerns of who will maintain the property once it's all built, that, you know, and also the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaul. Mr. Bert, who is up next?
Gretchen Chipperini, and give me one moment, please.
Certainly.
I'm concerned about the traffic on Grove Avenue, since I live off of that, and I live in that little.
Okay, Gretchen Chipperini has been enabled.
Good evening, Ms. Chipperini. If you could, please state your name and address for the record, and then.
I want to ask something before we start the call. I wrote up a thing.
Can you move on one second, please? I'm hearing another person speaking.
It's Gretchen's background. I think she's playing it in the background. It's coming from Gretchen's.
I have no background.
I'm hearing the last conversation.
Can you mute Leanne?
Is that what it is?
That's not me.
Got it. Okay, we're set.
Okay, Ms. Chipperini.
I was told yesterday by Lisa that we can submit and we can speak, but.
That's correct. That's correct. You can submit written comments if you'd like to do so after you're speaking tonight. That's perfectly fine. If you could state your name and address for the record, then we'll start the timer, please. Thank you.
Chipperini, 87 Michigan Drive. We don't have a normal public meeting at a ti- why don't we have a normal public meeting at a time when citizens are not under extreme stress about catching a deadly virus, being stuck in a house with a bunch of irritated kids, and worrying about paying bills and for food with money we may not have next week? Why should anyone care if a public meeting on the William Sealy's property gets discussed at this very inconvenient time, or two or two, three months from now, when our citizens will have less worries on their plate? It's all very fishy to me. Why does our highly-paid economic development staff think that apartments are the key to pulling Groton out of its extreme economic deterioration? We already have thousands of apartments which have not stopped the deterioration, and in fact, they have been a contributor to it. Why does the staff think that having dogs in an apartment does not double the deterioration rate of an apartment? Why does the staff think that single-bedroom apartments will not become loaded with children cramped into small spaces to save money for their parents, who are going to be pressured by the difficult times that we'd be having ahead of us? Why does the staff think that the William Sealy's property is put to its highest and best use with a Howard Johnson-style apartment complex with long depressing hallways and facing the highway in an amphitheater U shape? That is the ideal layout to amplify the noise coming off the bridge every time a truck comes down the hill of the bridge and grinds its gears while shifting. I lived there for 20 years, so I do know. Why does the staff think there, any upscale rental will be attractive place that looks like a 1960s Howard Johnson's motel or barracks, whatever your heart desires to call it? That is a bunch of boxes that has not one interesting architectural feature. My God, Belfer Beady is better looking. Why does the staff think that a developer says window dressing, things like a pool, dog walk, and meeting room is just mentioned as a marketing buzzword to get staff and thus this council to buy into it? Why does the staff think that a Howard Johnson-style building at the gateway toward town would be an iconic symbol of our town to help attract more investment? When the property has great potential with all utilities, including natural gas, three-phase power, a river view, and incredible on-off egress, and I-90 fell will achieve this? Why does our staff think that Mystic with two, no public utilities, no highway egress, and no view is a better place to put a fake mixed-use project with 700 apartments when the William Sealy School property is far more suited for this type of project? By the way, calling that a mixed-use project is just a fake name to get 700 units into Mystic. Why does staff not come into action when one word of the Camoin Report that we put $150,000 into, and it does not suggest any apartments for a solution for our future group? Why are we completely banning the Camoin Report? Why does our staff think naming a project Triton after a Cold War Raider Picket Surfership have anything to do with Groton's heritage as a submarine-building town? I'm sure that name gives renter, upscale renters a warm and fuzzy feel. Why did John Reiner lie to every citizen multiple times who attended the zone change meeting for the William Sealy School property in 2017, from residential to commercial? I'm reporting to you these lies in what I'm just told I was gonna give you. Why did, and you can listen to it, I suggest you do. Why did Reiner say multiple times that he is working with me and meeting with me every two days when no such events ever took place? I wish John Reiner would apply these creative abilities to economic development rather than creating these cobwebs of lies. Why did our town manager, John Bert, who attended that meeting, allow Reiner to say these lies and continue with the unfulfilled promises which this Donmar junk is? Why is Lainer Reiner constantly feeling?
Ms. Chipperini, please be more respectful.
He is a liar. He is a liar, Mayor. Why is liar Reiner constantly feeding this council lies that I want some exorbitant price for my adjacent property, and that I refuse to speak with Donmar while they continue to never call me? And when they and their lord told me at the introductory meeting, and you were there, Mayor, that they would call me? Why does District 8 and 1, that I grew up in, have to be destroyed in value and quality of life for decades for the short and grief of our two leaders, Don Reiner and John Bert? Why does our mayor, Patrice Granatowski, not understand the difference between an integrated project with a Main Street, several roundabouts, and a lot of character in two projects built on two separate, smaller acreage properties at two different elevations?
You have one minute, ma'am.
Okay, no mayor. Granit Daranowski, 1 plus 1 definitely is not equal to 3 in that scenario. It probably does not even equal 1. Why is this town staff and the town council so ignorantly and blindly determined to continue to destroy our town piece by piece in a short period of time by pushing of two incompetent, zero-experience builders with extreme long-term, heavily impacting projects that everyone knows will only cause further harm to our prospects for any real recovery? And even more so in light of the impact that COVID-19 will have. Thank you.
Mr. Bert, do you have any other speakers that are on the line? If not, we'll go to, I believe, the clerk has something she was gonna read for the public hearing. Or is that for citizens' petitions? Madam Clerk?
This is for public hearing.
Mr. Bert, do you have anyone else?
No one else live, no.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please.
Okay, this is from Robert Bailey, 179 Michigan Drive. Request William Sealy School not be sold off for development. Long-living residents paid for it and still living there. Open space has been dictated to destruction of more open space with new, bigger school building projects to consume more open space without replacement of open space. Please understand that this, that's left from prior school projects long ago should be returned to open space because it hurts the long-term residents' overall morale, their place and way of life. They paid into all along the way to have their investment turned against them is unfair. Residents do feel obsoleted. It's elementary to give them priority first before ever taking anything away from them with a staff and a master plan going forward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you have another from Representative Fortner, or is that for the citizens' petitions?
Representative Fortner's, oh, I thought you were gonna read that, but I certainly can open that.
Is it for this or for the citizens' petitions?
It was for this, for William Sealy.
You have it handy?
Yep, I do. So, let's see. I don't have her address handy, but I'll get that for the record. Cynthia Fortner, to the members of the town council and planning department, I attended the informational meeting of the William Sealy's development on February 19, 2020. I was encouraged to hear that the developers stated that they are looking to build an apartment complex with a diverse population and sense of community. With that goal in mind, I would like to encourage a discussion about affordable housing. Affordable housing, known as AH, is not low-income housing. AH is for earners, earnings up to 80% of the local median income. Teachers, EMTs, law enforcement officers, as well as young professionals, might all qualify for AH. According to February 17, 2020 editorial in the day, in order to retrain young professionals and achieve long-term economic stability, more affordable housing is needed throughout the region. In California, affordable housing units are mixed seemingly into developments. This encourages diversity as well as a sense of community. I believe that the town of Groton should promote development models to include diverse and affordable options. This allows young and old, from many different professions, to form a community together. Sincerely, Cynthia Fortner, Artic, Groton, Artium.
Hey, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Bert, do you have any other people? I just wanted to be sure before we close out the public hearing.
Sure. And just to mention, Mr. Potter had submitted two letters to the council, which they all have, as well as they'll be part of the minutes, so people, so public can see they're actually on our website already. We received an email from Linda Gade from 160 Walker Hill Road asking to postpone the hearing. One second, please. All right, email from Nancy Kenyon, 14 Hamilton Avenue, opposed to the project. John's, an email from John Scott, 674 Cowhill Road, in support of the project. The Conservation Commission submitted a letter in support of the project, though they would like to see the open space protected as permanent for the public, any remaining public, any remaining open space from the development. Email from Gretchen Gottier in support of the project, and an email from Laura Cotto asking for postponement due to some concerns over the project. That's what I have. And just to remind the council, the public hearing was really about selling the property. The actual Donmar agreement will be later in the agenda. John Reiner will be speaking at that point, and some of what he says may answer some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bert. I believe that's everyone that has signed up to speak and all the correspondence that we received. So at this point, it is 7:01. We will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. We are on to Roman numeral five, which is receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. And again, I'm gonna go to Mr. Bert to see who he has. I believe we have at least one person that signed up in advance to speak. Mr. Bert?
Yes, we have Mr. Potter again. He's the only one signed up. I'm hitting, Mr. Potter, you should be okay to unmute now.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. If you could, please, just one more time, give your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir. You have five minutes.
Thomas W. Potter, 154 Walker Hill Road in Groton, Connecticut. I understand that the town of Groton has three other school properties that are in some stage of being put up for consideration for sale. Concerning the William Sealy project, I asked John Reiner in a Freedom of Information Act request for information that was prepared by the selection committee when Goman, G-O-M-A-N, and York, Y-O-R-K, were selected as the marketing consultants for the Sealy School project. I was informed that there were no documents available to substantiate my request. And I'm a little confused by that because I recall in Mr. Reiner's discussion earlier this evening that that seems to be a very distinct part of the deliberative process. So I'm asking Mr. Reiner and perhaps Mr. Bert to explain just exactly where we are concerning the other three school properties in terms of the marketing consultant, if they've been selected, if there's been an RFP submitted, if there have been responses, if there have been interviews by a selection committee. Just in so many words, I want to know exactly what the status is on those three other school properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Mr. Bert, we have no one else signed up to speak?
We do not.
Very good. Okay, so we are on to Roman numeral six, response to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Okay.
Question.
I'm sorry.
Should we open up the floor? Usually at the end of our meetings, we open up the floor. If anybody who didn't sign up would like to speak, they are allowed to speak.
That is not what we do. Well, you mean just, we have no one else online, though.
I just want to make sure that no one else is being
No one's, no one else is online.
Counselor Baumgartner, you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank Mr. Potter for raising his concerns regarding the project. And also, I'd like to just clarify one comment made by the manager with respect to a letter written from, by Laura and Thomas Cotto. While they did express concerns, they implored the council to postpone the public hearing. She did share some concerns about the loss of safe places for school, for young children to play on. As many folks know, the Williams Sealy property is used as pretty much as an open space, recreational space by many folks in the community, but most especially by folks in the neighborhood. So there is a significant amount of concerns regarding that. And I do hope the council also considers that as we, you know, consider selling the property. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner, Counselor Heed, please.
Yes, just a couple of points to respond. The first speaker asked who would be managing the properties. After Donmar completes the construction, my understanding is that Donmar intends to manage the property and keep it. And then in terms of the traffic, the traffic study hasn't yet been, hasn't yet been conducted. But the expectation, from what I understand, is it should be a handful of cars every 15 to 30 minutes on the average. But if you, if we reach the target audience that intends to, that'll be working at EB, for example, there should be a shuttle van that'll be running down and it'll help them avoid not only traffic, but the parking issues down at EB that will likely get a little bit worse. Obviously, for traffic down onto Walker Hill Road, it would be better if we could access directly on Route 12, but that's not an option right now. So that's all, I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Thank you, Counselor Heed. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I have read all the letters that were sent to me, and I understand people's concerns. And the same is with some of the other properties. I think this is a presentation that was brought to our community. It's an opportunity for us to have economic development. What we're trying to do, well, at least I'm trying to do it because I can only speak for myself in a responsible way and to also meet the needs of our community. I think as, this is the preferred developer and this is the option agreement. This is not a final sale, meaning that this is going to happen. This is only one of many steps that are happening with this project. The community will have other opportunities, I'm sure, to speak to the developers. And there will be zoning hearings and other such opportunities to speak as well. So this is not the final step. This is the very early stages and beginning part of it. So I don't want people to think that just because we're going to vote on this tonight and possibly go forward with the option agreement that that means it's final and it's done. There's many more steps involved. And as I was specifically asked a question by Mr. Potter, I believe that later in our presentation, or later in the agenda, when we get to that topic, that this will be something that will be discussed as I have had conversations regarding this topic this past week. So that will be covered, I believe, when we get to that part of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Franco. I'm not seeing any other hands. So we will move on to the next item, which is Roman numeral seven. And this is the consent calendar, and I'm going to go in the order where we normally sit. So Counselor Baumgartner, would you move the consent calendar, please?
Yes, I'll make a motion to move, to move the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second, Franco.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. That's, I, thank you for giving your name when you're seconding, that's very helpful. Is there any discussion on the items on the consent calendar? I have, Counselor Obray had asked that we note who we have received contributions from. So I'm going to run through the list here. These are all special trust fund contributions. Thank you to Lee Vincent, Bob Statchen, Samantha Tremontana, Tremontana, excuse me, Elizabeth Hogan, Joellen Anderson, Dan Cahill, Shay Cahill, Stephen and Marcia Dietrich, Puppies Behind Bars, Robert and Linda Ashworth, Lee Vincent, and Bonnie Wardell. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are currently at seven counselors as Counselor Obray had an issue with her connection. So that was moved, seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Mr. Burt, could you try to get Counselor Obray back online, please? All right, we are on to communications and reports. Oh, I was going to go to Mr. Burt first on this, I apologize. In light of the public health emergency, which is why we are here the way we are this evening, I just wanted Mr. Burt to give us all an update on where the town stands, what we're doing, and any news, just to kind of keep the public informed and to reassure that they are working on your behalf. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Burt for that, and then we'll go to counselors, please, thank you.
Sure. In terms of what the town's doing related to COVID, you probably saw out there today, we closed downtown tennis courts, basketball courts, volleyball court, playgrounds, hockey rinks, skate park, trying to, because we were getting a lot of congregating, and it's in action, other towns were taking, so we did that today. At this point, we have, hold on one sec. At this time, we have 13 positive cases in the town, including the four in the city. The town is open by appointment only with the intent of people doing absolutely necessary paperwork, you know, permits, that type of thing, in and out as quick as possible. We are working with Physician One Urgent Care. We're looking at working with them to do throughout the town mobile screening and testing, where if you had insurance, you would go through them. They would screen you to see if you're likely to have COVID-19. And then, then they would come and do a remote test. They think they can do up to 200 a day. I actually did send this information on to Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and I just received a reply that they, that they think it would be a good option for the town to do that. So we're looking at getting that set up as quick as possible. Information, of course, will be released as soon as that is ready. The town is doing, we've got a lot of people, most people who can work remotely are working remotely now from home. And then we're also doing flexible schedules, trying to keep people apart as much as possible, keep everyone healthy. And our police department are doing, as they patrol, they're encouraging citizens to practice social distancing as they see groups of people congregating. And in terms of, if you, do you want me to touch base on the Governor's Executive Order 7S?
Yes, please.
As we know, the Governor's Executive Order 7S gives two options, to defer taxes for 90 days or to reduce the interest to 3%. We found out today, there's going to be further guidance in the next, further guidelines in the next two days. Whatever the town does will apply to the city, Groton, Long Point, and the fire districts. So we're going to need to get a group meeting together and talk about options and how it impacts all of us because it's not going to be just for the town. The state is saying they want 169 applications and that's it. And it'll apply to everyone. I have a message into Mayor Hedrick, so we can talk tomorrow. But all of us need to be able to talk about that. And each of us are going to need to run our own calculations too on different scenarios and what the impacts would be to us. So Director, Finance Director Cindy Landry is working on that for the town. She just started that today because we've been tied up with the bond rating agencies the last week or two, just wrapped that up late yesterday. And other than that, I wanted to announce a really generous donation that came in today. Stanley and Barbara White from Noang donated $5,000 to the Groton Food Locker, which is, you know, an amazing donation. I just wanted to announce that.
Very nice. Thank you for the report, and thank you to the Whites. It's very generous. All right, so we will go down the council table. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the update. And thank you and the entire town staff for the very hard work you're doing to ensure that the town residents are safe during this crisis. I'd also like to give a shout out to our first responders who are doing yemen's work and also ensuring, you know, that folks remain healthy and the folks who are directly afflicted by this virus are getting the help that they need. And our health professionals that are working in, that live in town and work in L&amp;M and our surrounding hospitals as well, who are working overtime right now. I would like to share a story. I'm sure many of you read in the paper about the Hillary Company, who, metal shop in, you know, Route One, and led by Joe Dela Cruz, who also serves as their state rep. And they produced thousands of metal strips that can be placed on N95 masks that they are donating to not just L&amp;M Hospital, but also sending out to New York City and throughout the state. So just the, the amount of love and, you know, the love and the support this company and so many other nonprofits, whether, you know, it's, and the town, you know, whether it's Human Services or the Senior Center. You know, it's been beautiful to watch our community come together and help folks in need. So again, thank you to everyone who is, you know, doing their part to ensure that our neighbors remain safe and healthy during this time. And, you know, it's gone a long way. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. Counselor Parker?
Just receiving the emails from the public and everyone that is working or has to work is essential. Please be safe. And thank you to the businesses that are open and trying to keep everything going along. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I watched the RTM committee deliberations this past weekend. I've received many correspondence from residents regarding the Williams Sealy property as well as the coronavirus and how it's affecting them. Also, my son and I have been going out and driving around Groton and taking photographs and exploring our town and finding things that we have never seen before, which we find that very interesting. And I have on my list here that I want to discuss the number of, the high number of unemployed people in our state, especially here in Groton, that I'm very concerned about. And I wanted to discuss the food locker and that they are accepting food and monetary donations. And I would like to encourage everybody and anybody that could help to please contact them. You can drop off your donations. They have a section that's cored off, and you can put it in a basket, and they'll come out and meet you and bring your donations inside. And also, if you are in need of assistance, you're welcome to call them. Schedule a pickup time, and you can go there and get food assistance as well. And, because I did, I actually dropped off something today. And I put a post up on Facebook. So I am more than delighted and happy from the Whites in Noang. And it has just absolutely made my day today to hear that they have donated, made this generous donation to help our neighbors in Groton. So thank you so much.
Counselor Heed?
I am now unmuted. I will go ahead and echo everything that's been said before me and also give a shout out to my friends at Big Y who are right on the front lines. So in addition to that, also like Counselor Franco, I've received numerous communications and also attended the RTM budget committee meetings. Well, I didn't attend, I watched them through Zoom, at least for most of the day. And then in addition to that, well, actually, I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Heed. Counselor Obray?
Oh, there, I think, you don't have my picture, but that's just as good. I just wanted to mention that the Groton Rotary and the Mystic Rotary are both making substantial contributions to the food locker. I, I think the Groton Rotary is in the amount of maybe $5,000 with a matched amount. And I think Mystic is about the same. So should put us in a little bit better condition. I wish I'd had the opportunity to speak to that last gentleman that had all the questions. I don't remember his name, and if I ever get back into Connecticut, I'd love to meet with him and go over his, all his questions about what had been done in the process because we have done everything that he asked about. But I'd love to have somebody have the opportunity to, to tell him that. And had I been able to vote, I would have voted yes on our last vote.
Thank you, Counselor Obray. So next, we are on to Counselor Bordel.
Thank you. Just want to second everything that was said, definitely thinking of our neighbors and people that are becoming, needing support and help during this time when normally they were the ones giving the support to others. Just recently, at my own job, people were starting to be laid off in the medical field because we are an ambulatory surgical center that's, that does elective procedure and emergency procedures. And to see people's face when they're, when they're being cut from five days down to two and now having to apply for unemployment. So I just want to second what Counselor Franco has said. It's really important that we think of our food pantries, think of helping neighbors, simple things, our elderly that can't come out, they might not have loved ones in the area. Knock on somebody's door and, you know, or call them and just say, hey, is there something I can drop off for you? Sometimes it's just being, having the access to get to the things that they need, they don't have a way. I also listened and watched the RTM's budget sessions, committee meetings. I also work very part-time with Legislative Health District and work with them for their program. And we're doing a lot of investigation work for the state for food insecurities. And boy, right now is the topic even more important. Just the number of people that need help right now waiting. Some people that I know that have been partially unemployed or fully unemployed, it's taken four to five weeks to get their first check when they were the first round. And so, you know, trying to save as much money as possible. Please do not dismiss other items that are not food items. Certain people do not have cash to buy essential things. So just any way you can reach out and help, there's, it's amazing. And, you know, thanks to the Whites and Dela Cruz and everybody else and, you know, the Rotary Club, all the different agencies and volunteers that are just stepping up, donating things where they can, diapers, formula, things that we take for granted right now, people cannot afford. And it's amazing to see the people that are out there using their time, if they may be laid off, trying to help their neighbors. So continue the efforts and let's see where this can take us, and we will get through this. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez?
Hi. Yeah, I just want to shout out to the police department for really being at the forefront of, you know, keeping our, our citizens updated on the best possible way to stay safe from COVID-19 and keeping them, you know, safe during this time. You know, they're on the front lines out there. So I just wanted to, to thank them for that.
May I? Melendez, Counselor Heed, you wanted to add something that you forgot about disposing of PPEs?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody to, if you're out with your plastic gloves and, you know, your face masks and you want to throw them away, please put them away in trash cans and don't drop them on the street or the parking lots.
Thank you, Counselor Heed. So So I want to report out on the golf advisory board meeting that was last evening. They are looking at possibly changing the season pass dates. It normally runs April 1 to April 1, and they're looking at pushing back to May 1 to May 1 because they have people that are concerned with whether the course will be closing or not. So there was discussion of doing that. They were tracking $100,000 ahead. Now it's looking like they're about $60,000 ahead instead. So they're watching revenues carefully. They've been working on some social media promotions where they're getting very good return on their dollar for boosting these posts or targeted posts promoting golf and the value of membership at Shenandoah Classic Club. And they were looking, they were concerned when they saw the postponement of the CIPs for the golf course. But I told them that they were postponements and that we will be revisiting those again next year. And they were discussing a PGA program called Get Golf Ready. It's a six-week program. So that was the report out on the golf advisory board. We would just encourage all the golfers to please maintain their social distance. We would love to keep the course open for you, but we need you to do your part and keep your six feet when you're out there golfing. All right, so I just wanted to talk as a teacher. We are in the classroom still, and I just wanted to offer words of encouragement to all the other teachers out there, but mainly to all the students out there. This is all new to all of us, and I just want to encourage you to do your best and reach out to your teachers when you need help with anything, and they will do their best to help you out. And we will get through this, but keep plugging away at it and keep doing your online learning. It's important. All right, so I know, I see, I see other people want to talk. Yeah. Okay, so we have Counsel Franco.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to jump in because I didn't hear Counsel Heed mention anything about the wonderful cleanup that he's been doing also in Groton. He seems to have a, somebody go out with him, you know, like a new host, a co-host with him. And he posts these on Facebook that he's doing these wonderful cleanups. And I mean, I've seen the pictures where, I mean, at times there's like, it looked like there were 10 bags that he's, they're picking up, and I think he's taken out Albert Cologne, who's part of the RTM. And I think he's taking out a city councillor at one time as well. And he's doing these wonderful cleanups. And as the beautification chair, I think it's wonderful. And I would encourage anybody else, because I see so many people out walking now, if they are out and about to also grab a bag and maybe help pitch in and help clean up Groton as well if you have time. Thank you. And thank you, Counsel Heed.
Hello?
Counsel Obrey?
I just wanted to mention, I don't know if it's the same up there, but I expect it is. They're really looking for blood donations. There's a real shortage of blood because people have been nervous about coming out. So you can call the Red Cross and make an appointment. So it's just you and the person you're working with. But might be something to have everybody think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Obrey. All right. All the councils have had a chance to present their communications and reports. And we are on to the Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting.
The RTM, as several of you reported in your reports, that the RTM has started the budget process and all of the subcommittees met last Saturday consecutively. It was really quite well. I have to commend moderator. She really followed your lead, Madam Mayor, in understanding the motivate, you know, how to move a meeting along. So that they went through all the accounts. And now they have a regular meeting tomorrow at 7:30. And this will be on Zoom meeting also. And it will be televised through Groton Municipal Television. And that they have three items on their agenda and any other items that we might get this evening. And then Saturday, the 11th of April, at 9 o'clock AM, the annual meeting, I believe, was set for them. So that's where we're going.
Madam Clerk, if there are citizens that wish to present petitions at the regular RTM meeting, can you provide the information as to how they would do that, please?
Right. So they will either email the town manager, that town manager@grotonct.gov.
It's counsel, it's counsel at.
Oh, you don't use yours?
Well, mine is Jay Burt. There isn't one.
Either, or the town clerk, townclerk@grotonct.gov. I thought that the town manager had it.
That's what I've used anyways.
So is this on the website as well, or if they needed to, they could go ahead to the website and take a look at the email address, correct?
I'll have to look at that, but I'll make sure that it is on there for both the annual meeting on Saturday, because that's, there's an opportunity there also for citizens to make comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Just to point out, there will be instructions on the agenda also, as well as the website and how to submit.
Very good. Thank you. Clerk of the Council?
The items that I have to report would be that the town clerk's office is mainly closed. We are by appointment for marriage certificates. Everything else is being either through the internet or through the mail service. We also have a Dropbox outside of Town Hall for town clerk and probate business only, although I think it's being used for other avenues. So and funeral directors also have access to our office as we are required by the Department of Health to submit all death registered deaths on a weekly basis instead of a monthly basis. So it's a little more hairy. I'm running short staff. I have down two staff members at this moment. One for COVID, she's not, she doesn't have it. She's just, she's just has health issues that her doctor says that she must not be around people. So she's in shelter or quarantine or whatever you want to call it, self-quarantine. And so it's a little hairy. So also I had a meeting this morning with the Secretary of State's office. And they're keeping us informed with weekly updates. If there's any, there hasn't been any changes. The primary has been postponed for the presidential preference primary to June 2. There is, the Secretary of State has written a letter to the governor asking for the governor to lift the restrictions for absentee ballots. Although I have to caution everyone who's listening that that's a constitutional action. And I don't know if the, I don't believe that the governor, I think the legislature has to petition the electorate to change the constitution. So that's not, I don't think that that's going to happen. But there may be, it may be encouragement to, for people to use absentee ballots for the presidential preference primary. November, I don't think we're going to have any issues. But then again, who knows, right?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, is there anything else you wanted to add at this juncture?
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you. And I don't believe there are any department heads with us this evening, nor the superintendent or Board of Ed. Is that correct?
Well, John Reiner's here, but he'll be speaking in just a few minutes, I believe.
All right, so we are on to Room Number 9 Committee Reports, Committee of the Whole. I don't have anything to report. Temporary rules. Chairman Obrey?
We have not met, but what I'm going to try to do is a meeting at our appointed date through the same system. So if we could have it put out that we are going to have a meeting if Conrad and Juliet are in agreement.
Thank you, Counsel Obrey.
Excuse me?
Counsel Parker?
It's Baumgartner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I saw that shining head. It just.
Okay, so Counsel Obrey, Counsel Parker and Counsel Baumgartner would like to schedule a temporary rules committee meeting. So perhaps you could shoot Mr. Bird or Ms. Hilton an email giving them the date when you would like to meet.
Okay. Let me know, guys, what you want. We'll set it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel appointments. Chairman Melendez, anything to report?
We didn't have a meeting in February, but I don't think, we didn't have a meeting in March, but I don't think I gave an update on our February meeting yet. We nominated Sashi Nadana Siva to the Library Board, Aaron Kane to the Ethics Commission, Taylor Samuel to the Fair Rank Commission, Susan Sutherland to Planning and Zoning, and Eric Goodman and Mark Summers switched places on the Historic Commission. One of them was alternate, the other one was active, and then they switched places.
Thank you, Counsel Melendez. And then regular rules. Chairman Heed, anything?
No report.
Thank you. So we are on to new business. And this is 2020-124 Sealy School Property Option Agreement. And we are at, I believe, Counsel Parker?
Yes, give me one second to get to that page.
On the backside of the contributions to trust funds. Well, that's how.
I'm actually looking at it on the computer, so it's totally different. So is it, what number is that?
2020-120 Sealy School Property Option Agreement.
2020-120.
Okay. Resolution to enter into an option to purchase agreement with Don Mar for the William Sealy School Property, whereas the town of Groton owns excess buildings and properties that are no longer needed for public uses or that have been acquired through foreclosures due to unpaid taxes. And whereas the town has been marketing the William Sealy School Property for over a decade and whereas the town has been working with the Selective Preferred Development Team, Don Mar as the purchasing entity on a proposal for the site and whereas an option to purchase for the eventual purchase of the property has been prepared by the town attorney and is ready to be signed by Don Mar and the town manager after authorization by the town council. And now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to enter into an option to purchase agreement with Don Mar for the William Sealy School Property. I so move.
Second, Heed?
Thank you. Moved by Parker and seconded by Heed. Thank you very much. Mr. Bird, I believe Mr. Reiner is with us. Mr. Bronk is with us.
Yes, they're both going to speak in a moment. And I just wanted to point out that we also have our attorney, Eric Callahan, available. Anthony De Joya from Don Mar is present. And then Mike Goman and Rob Mantessi from Goman New York are also.
Good evening. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So I just wanted to briefly go over, we did discuss a lot of the committee of the whole meeting. But again, the town has been working with the real estate marketing firm, Goman New York, marketing the former William Sealy School Property. In many instances, actually, the Sealy School is the only school excess property that we're actually working with an independent real estate firm. All of the other schools that we are marketing right now, staff, Paige Bronk, taking the lead with his team, assisting, you know, with town manager Burt, myself and others in our department and other divisions within the town to do the marketing and the promotion on these. But the Sealy School is a little bit of a unique situation, so we brought in Goman New York for some of their assistance on this. We, as discussed during the public hearing and our development process, we went out to bid. We worked with Goman New York, had interviews. The interview committee in that instance was made up of members from Goman New York, the town council, staff, town manager Burt. And we then, as an interview committee, met with a number of firms going through that process and took our recommended for developer, Don Mar, to the council in the executive session. We then had that public meeting. After that public meeting, that Don Mar and the town staff put on to introduce the plans, we came to the council back in March to present the plans publicly before the council as well as the option agreement. And that's kind of where we are at this point in time. Now, I can also get into a little bit more detail. You know, when we went through that development process that I talked about before, when the interview committee makes a recommendation on the preferred developer status, the preferred developer selection criteria includes a lot of things, looking at the proposed use, the developer experience, the financial benefit to Groton, the developer's ability to finance the property, their ability to execute actually the agreement, take it through the planning and zoning and other regulatory process, and the schedule for what they can do for actually getting the project built. Don Mar offered the best quality product and benefit to Groton of all of the responsive bidders. In addition, some questions have been asked about the demolition of the Sealy School and why that would cost more than the Noang School demolished several years ago. The bidder, Don Mar, is part of their kind of secondary information that they gave us. Included their estimate on all the expected costs, including the approximately $2.1 million estimate for demolition. Part of the higher cost for demolition of Sealy could be that Sealy is 58,740 square feet in size with the full basement, while Noang was only 32,500 square feet in size with a 1,600 square foot basement. So there's been some misinformation out there about the size of the schools. Sealy School is substantially larger than the Noang School. Additionally, different buildings can have different hazardous materials. Sealy School is known to have asbestos, lead paint, high levels of lead and mold in the air. The town in the proposed, the proposal selection process looks at estimates, but we don't get independent estimates on the component. So we don't ask for demolition estimates, nor have we gone out and validated those estimates. The town, and in this case, their advisors, Goman New York, look to see whether the numbers look overall realistic. Since the question came up, though, we did ask Public Works just yesterday for a rough cost estimate that of what could be expected on demolition. Using the size of the school in their estimate and some recent bids that they've gotten through the school project, their estimate to demolish the school based on a competitive process was about $1,470,000. But again, this is a rough estimate that they had prepared back from a number of other projects. The estimate that Don Mar provided, that $2.1 million, wasn't an estimate that they had had prepared by one firm. Don Mar will still have to do their due diligence on all of their costs should the option to purchase agreement be approved. Since this is a package bid selection process, the town is not responsible for verifying the, all the different costs that go into preparing a bid package. The process is focused on obtaining the best product, the desired product that best fits the needs of the town. The price offered for the purchase of the land, the amount of tax abatement requested and the taxes likely to be produced, which often leads to a great positive impact on the tax rules, being more important than the purchase price if combined with the low ask on the tax abatement. Just for informational purposes, other bidders on the project were looking for substantial tax abatements of at least seven to 10 years of the full value of the tax abatement. Other development teams' purchase offers were basically as a function of the overall bid package equivalent to Don Mars. Don Mar not asking for a seven or 10-year tax abatement. I think they've been very responsive, working with us through this process, meeting the needs of what the interview committee was looking for, as well as very responsive to the RFP. And I think that they will build a high-quality product in Groton, and they're going to continue to manage that product once they do build that, if this agreement goes through, after they go through the planning and zoning process as well as inland wetlands and get other approvals as necessary. Happy to answer any questions. I don't know, Paige, if you had anything that you wanted to add?
Mr. Bronk, if you'd like to speak, just identify yourself, please, for the public.
This is Paige Bronk, Economic and Community Development Manager for the town. Only one other comment, and that pertains to the demand for housing. We've heard from Electric Boat, Pfizer and others that there is a demand for contemporary housing. A housing unit is not a housing unit, and we've learned this through our market analysis that was done. We're also hearing it from the development community and also our major employers that if we're going to be attracting employees who not only are going to be working in town, but also living here, we need more housing option. And one of the options is more. And o- one of the options is more of this type of housing, where it's amenity rich. And it's quite attractive in particular to our younger workforce, but it's not exclusive to that. It's also attractive to empty nesters as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bronk, dude, any of the other um, gentlemen who are here with us this evening wish to speak before we open it up for the council?
This is John Bird, I just wanted to mention uh, uh, that this would have to go through the RTM also, um, for sale of property.
So the, the option agreement goes to the.
Not this, I'm just saying down the road in order to sell it. Eventually, if you're gonna actually sell it, then it, no matter who's purchasing, it has to go through the RTM.
Correct, so there would be plenty of opportunity for the public to win again if there are further concerns.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, John Reiner, um, as Mr. Bird uh, had mentioned, not only does this get referred to the RTM. But there is, and I really can't stress enough the extensive regulatory process before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our Inland Wetlands Commission, and before Don Mar can make application to our regulatory commissions. That actually have to come back to the council, there's a, a section in that, that option agreement. So the, the council sees that final site plan before it's submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission to give it their final blessing.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner, uh, did any of the other gentlemen wish to speak, or should we open it up? Right, are there counselors that have questions? Not seeing hands, Council Franco.
Hi, thank you all for coming, um, so can you tell them? Or tell everybody what the increase we would see in our tax base after this is built?
Um, we had, this is John Reiner, again, we had run some initial estimates, um, I don't have those right in my hand. I know that, I think I will get back to you on that, I feel like it was somewhere. In the multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, I can't remember the exact number, uh, let me, while other questions are coming up. Let me see if I can find some documentation on that.
Okay, thank you, cuz that, I, I do recall there was an email or some kind of communication that was sent, cuz I had requested this information earlier. So maybe John Bird could um, look that up quick as well. Um, so going back to the demolition, so basically I think as. A counselor, one of the things that I was taking into consideration was taking the demolition versus the sales price and the. Tax abatement request that would be put in by a bidder, and taking those things into consideration. Um, and also the overall impact that this would have on, for the value of our community. So when it comes down to the actual sales price. I think the demolition does matter, because you're basically saying to um, the person that's purchasing. You're going to take care of basically a two million dollar price tag here on your own. Without having also the increase on um, the purchase, and especially in the environment we're right in right now, I think this is. Um. A normal thing, I don't think, um, I've seen other properties in town that have gone for a very small amount. Because of the remediation and the demolition costs that are involved, and then the overall impact that would be beneficial to the town and. Increase in the taxes that we would benefit from. So, I would like to thank John, Mr. Reiner for um, giving us the information. Because this is what I was told also when I had requested, um. The, the amount of demolition, and um, they. He had informed us of also, look at, uh, there was a demolition over in Stonington. After a building had collapsed and the, the demolition cost that we were involved in that and how expensive they were. The knowing property was smaller, and then also the knowing property was smaller, it was ten years ago, the prices have increased when it comes to remediation. And also there are differences between what's at Williams Sealy compared to um, knowing. Because this uh, was something that was, I had questioned myself as the drastic difference in price. And I thought that was a very sticking point for me to, to know. Uh, the tra- and also I wanted to, as many people have mentioned, do you, what it. Can you give us more information on the traffic study, because I think this will. This will make a big impact on the neighborhood and what the traffic study could possibly or potentially. Give us for information and what kind of changes could they possibly even say that could be done?
Sure, uh, John Reiner, so two things, I uh, was just kind of running through some numbers. I think it was somewhere in the ballpark of approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year at full buildout. Of the site, once it's finished for tax revenue, so that's what we'd be looking at on a yearly basis, somewhere in that ballpark. Um, as far as needing to do a traffic study, um, it, it's kind of hard without having the study in hand. To look at what the recommended options would be, but there'd be uh, improvements to the roadway, looking at uh, turning lanes. Coming in and out of the pros- the parcel, whether it's a stop sign, whether it's a light, you know, looking at the traffic flows. Uh, improvements that might be needed to sidewalks, those are things that we would be working with the developer. And the Planning and Zoning Commission through that regulatory process, so it's, it's kind of hard to say what will come out of it. But the traffic study, working with their engineers and our own engineering team through Public Works. We would be looking to make sure that we keep the area as safe as possible.
Is it possible that when you, we leave, when somebody leaves that property. On to Walker Hill Road, would there be a potential to have a right turn only coming out of that parking lot? To go to bring traffic flowing down towards Route twelve instead of up into Walker Hill into the neighborhood?
It, it's possible, I don't know if it would be advisable, um. Cuz then I don't. Again, have to look at the, what the traffic engineers loo- uh, suggest, some of the traffic that's on Walker Hill Road right now. And I'm sure it's something we could work with the developers on, a- again, you, we want to keep it as safe. If an intersection as it comes out on to Walker Hill Road from the Sealy School property as possible.
Because I think um, many of the neighbors are concerned about. The traffic going up into the neighborhood, I don't know if they're as concerned, and maybe I have to reach out to them or they can reach out to me, and we could discuss this. But I think maybe something that may work is a right turn only and have them go down towards Route twelve. That's just something that I was thinking that may alleviate some of these issues and. Um, they may be happier with the project if that was something that was in it.
Okay, we, we can certainly look in, yeah, we can certainly look into that option, uh, you know, Anthony De Joya from Don Mars on the call. Um, you know, right now, so it's something he's hearing, so as we go through the design process. I do know that that road right now is a major cut through road going from one part of town, you know, up Walker Hill Road. So um, I, I think that's one of our bigger traffic issues there is the amount of cut through traffic that comes through that roadway now.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner, I just remind everybody that we're dealing with the purchase agreement this evening. And um, many of these details that many of us are concerned with, uh, especially the neighbors. Um, these are all gonna be coming out and there will be multiple um, opportunities to have input and have discussion about them. Counselor Baumgartner had his hand up, Counselor Baumgartner, do you still wish to speak?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I have a question for Mr. Reiner. Um, as uh, you know, the committee was considering several proposals and um, when uh. You know, you were, you were meeting with Don Mar Corporation and putting together kind of the conceptual, uh, they were putting together the conceptual site plan. Um, what considerations were given to connectivity and, and making uh, the surrounding property a bit more pedestrian friendly? And how that actual, uh, the uh, proposed development interacts with the, the neighborhood?
Uh, again, John Reiner, so in their conceptual site plans, they were looking at uh, buffering options. For the surrounding neighborhoods, ways that they could have the trails that they're proposing to have on their site connect to roadways. And other neighborhoods, if the neighbors want those, cuz that's something we need to really determine, we don't want to assume. We've heard some input that the neighbors would like to be able to utilize trails and walk through the property. So that's something, again, through that planning and zoning process, we would really flesh out those details. As far as connectivity to the property uh, adjacent that had frontage on Route twelve. The developer uh, will and the town would require them to leave uh, an ability to connect the two properties in the future. If through this process, there was a way for those two to start uh, syncing up and develop at the same time.
And then, again, when you look at the site plan, um, you know, that seems like there is about a, a parking space plus one or, you know. Plus or minus one, um, for every uh, you know, proposed unit, so it's about roughly uh, two hundred and eighty proposed units. So um, there seems to be a lot of surface parking lots, so sort of a two-part question. Um, one, I, I know obviously, uh, it hasn't gone through the planning and zoning uh, regulatory process. But uh, can you share some of the ideas uh, that have been brought forward by the developer with respect to how they plan on managing? A stormwater runoff, because there will most certainly be a substantial increase given the amount of um, of a per- uh, non-permeable surfaces.
Uh, yeah, so I think kind of the two-part question to that, one, uh, that's a conceptual design. And the number of parking spaces that will end up being on that site will have to be consistent with what's required via our zoning regulations. Also, within our zoning regulations, uh, we've recently done, you know, a complete regulatory overhaul. And one of those components was updating our stormwater standards, uh, they're very strict standards. And they will adhere to the best scientific principles so that they're managing all the stormwater runoff for, you know, quality of water. The volume of water, and that's something that we have said to the developer since day one, and they're very aware of what they need to deal with. From a stormwater management perspective on the site.
Uh, thank you, and um, also, um, you know, the, uh, have, uh, we have the J- Jalous Study. And, and several other studies with respect to um, the, uh, you know, how Groton will uh, manage uh, growth. And in future years and some recommendations to that, um, Councillor Heed earlier had mentioned that the. Um, Councillor Heed had mentioned that, uh, you know, we're uh, Electric Boat potentially could have a shuttle bus. That goes into the site, so how, how will the proposed development interact with kind of uh, surrounding transit? And um, uh, surrounding uh, transit and interact with uh, you know, our, our public uh, transportation?
Uh, that was something that Don Mar uh, had heard loud and clear at that public meeting from some of the comments, uh, when we were kind of uh, breaking into small groups. At the end, about the possibility of the connectivity with shuttle services from EB. Or other avenues throughout the town, that was something that they were going to work into, uh, their revised design. I think they actually already showed us another plan that had an ability for a shuttle bus to pull into the site. Cuz that, the more that they could utilize either public transportation or shuttles, the less surface parking they would need. And if the less surface parking that they have to build, it, it makes the site that much better.
And uh, and, and speaking of that, uh, you know.
Hey, hey, counselor, come on, give somebody else a shot.
Okay, we have, we have other counselors uh, waiting to speak, Counselor Baumgartner, did you have another question very briefly?
I'll yield the floor to my, uh, my good friend.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner, so just so everybody knows, I have Counselor Overy, Counselor Bordelon, um, Counselor Heed. Um, in the queue, so Counselor Overy.
I will try to keep mine short. I just want to say that I'm very excited about this project, I've had the ability to be involved since the very onset. I know things have been gone through properly, I would just remind the counselors that when we came on to the council originally, our original group. One of our things was to put the school buildings back onto the tax rolls in some manner. And I think we're really, really making that happen, and we should be very proud of ourselves, and we should be especially happy. With uh, having John Reiner and Paige Bronk guiding us through this. So if we want to do a good job for our citizens, I think what we need to do is be at the planning and zoning meetings and follow this along. And get this wonderful project up and on to the tax rolls and move on to the next empty school. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are on to Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you, um, I just wanted, um, just so it's stated, so if the dollar amount, which is a dollar that it's being purchased for. If this property at all doesn't go through for whatever reason, the property then defaults back to the town, is that correct? That was one of the questions I could ask.
So the town owns the property right now, uh, there was also, uh, in some of the correspondence we've received. The town is not paying itself taxes, so there's no tax revenue right now from this property.
Correct.
It has an assessed value by the town, but it doesn't pay itself taxes. The town will retain ownership of the property until Don Mar um, goes through and actually executes. Um, to close on the property, at this point in time, they're looking to do that around the time that they get their. Planning and zoning approval and then go and apply for a building permit. So that they can demolish the building and start uh, moving things along.
Thank you, yeah.
We wouldn't sell it until after.
Right.
They actually take over the, um, get all their land use approvals.
Okay, thank you, uh, my other question, my other thought on all this, uh, you know, hearing everything, I mean, I. I came to this at the tail end of it, but um, I did appreciate their presentation that I had seen. And um, really thinking of the needs of what the constituents are saying regarding the traffic. Um, I had brought up the shuttle service even from the casinos, EB, Pfizer, I, I think that would be. Um, wa- another way, um, of, of cour- of course, also with Counselor um, Franco's statement looking at that traffic study. So I, I'm excited to see where this goes, thank you.
Counsel Heed.
Uh, John Reiner touched upon what I was going to ask, I was just interested in what the timeline is for. When the property will actually be sold and transferred, and when uh, we might see uh, construction begin.
Uh, so I think Don Mar is pretty much ready to go doing their due diligence over the next few months. Uh, finalizing the site pla- the site plans that they can then bring them to the council, and then through the regulatory process. I think we'll see them back to the council probably in the next three months, maybe less, maybe a little bit more. To present that final plan, then from there going to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that should take a few months' time as well as uh, inland wetlands. And then, you know, from there, I think we'd start to see the closing of the property, the demolition, and then uh, shortly thereafter that, the construction.
Thank you, um, Mr. Reiner, process question for you, please. Um, for the public, for the neighbors, for any citizens in town who want to follow the process, what's the best way for them to do so?
Uh, if they would shoot me an email, um, we can let them know when we're getting applications. Or, I mean, really the best thing is to keep an eye, watch the Planning and Zoning Commission agendas. Before they go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they will go to inland wetlands. But if public wants to, members of the public want to send me an email and ask to be notified when these things go on the agenda. We can certainly do that also for either inland wetlands or the Planning and Zoning Commission. They could send it to myself and or Deb Jones in the department.
And again, along the way, I know I've said this before and you've said this before as well, there's gonna be the opportunity for public input at every step along the way.
Yes, there will be, yes, there will be, also, um, if members of the public go to the Triton Square website. There's uh, areas where they could be notified through that of the process, and I would certainly encourage people to do that. And I do know that, yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, that would be through, um, through, the Don Mar group is um, running that website, so they would have direct contact with the developer in that way.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, so Counselor Bordelon has her hand up again, but I wanted to see if any other first time counselors wish to speak, cuz we haven't heard from a few. And I am not seeing any other hands, so Counselor Bordelon, back to you.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to stress again how important um, it is as a town that we um, effectively uh, put maybe this information. On the com- on the computer as new developments come on, having the link, so maybe we could attach that link. Um, that way, the constituents in the town and taxpayers have a way of accessing information. As development starts to happen, where things are, um, not everybody tracks, you know, the town council or government page. But having a section where we're devoting um, anything to our um, TIF. Um, properties that are being like, once they're at the point where they can be publicly known what is going on, that we have a link. And we can kind of track the development, I think that would be very helpful.
Counselor Baumgartner has his hand up again, would you like to speak, sir? Counselor Baumgartner has his hand up again. Would you like to speak, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just like to comment on, on the proposed plan. Um, you know, I, I certainly value and appreciate the work you know, that our town staff has done to push forth this project, project in conjunction with the Oversight Committee. However, I do have a lot of concerns just regarding the, how, how the plan, I'm sorry, how the project connects with you know, the rest of the neighborhood and really enhances walkability. Our P O C D clearly does spell out that we are, you know, we, we that in the future, we'd like to build housing that is walkable, it's connected. In many ways, uh, you know, that is reflected in, typically reflected in mixed-use developments and this isn't a mixed-use development. I know in the past, um, you know, the town has looked at, at that site as a potential site for mixed use for several different reasons that, that fell through, but I, I do have significant concerns about the dramatic increase in traffic, what that will do to Walker Hill, that road that is not easily equipped to handle that increase in traffic and what that will do in terms of harming pedestrian safety or at least improving pedestrian safety in the area, considering Walker Hill Road does not have sidewalk. Certainly, you know, obviously down the road, the town can talk about doing that in conjunction with the project, but you know, also in, in terms of the open space or, or proposed open space, it isn't clear as to whether or not that will be recreational space that will be offered to the public as opposed to just residence. In one of the letters written by Ms. Kodo, she had stated that currently, for example, the, the playground is a site that, you know, any a, any, any young child in the town can use. However, if, you know, once the Sealy's property is done away with, there won't be any park, park land in that direct area that is accessible to the public due to the fact that the nearest playground is so I, I really hope that's something that is rectified. I, I hope in the future, especially as we consider future development projects, we really do place a greater emphasis on looking to do more mixed developments. And I know both, um, you know, our, John Reiner and Paige Bronk have been emphatic in, in supporting that, especially as they've looked to supporting or looking to improve our downtown Groton. And, you know, hopefully one day we have, you know, mixed-use development down there and maybe even a train station. And so those are kind of the, the things that kind of make it all connected. Once you have a mixed-use development, usually a train station follows or vice versa. And then you have transit facilities, you have bike lanes. And that is really what I think brings young people in, brings empty nesters who are looking to get away from, from using the car to get to and from everything they need. And I think Groton is uniquely in a position to, you know, into, become a more interconnected community by placing a greater emphasis on that. So I, again, just have a few concerns about kind of the, again, the impact on, on traffic in the area. And again, how, how the, the plan does interact with the community, but I appreciate the developers. You know, uh, you know, the developers recognition that they would, you know, like to incorporate sustainable practices within the proposed development and and just like to obviously thank our town staff for, for the hard work they've done to promote this site for, for a few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeJoy, I know you're with us this evening. Did you wish to address any remarks to the council at this point, sir?
Um, just a few things to go back to the demolition. I know Mr. Potter had asked about, um, some of the exclusions that were on there. I had given him the response that some of them were standard practice to have those things excluded. Those were things like permit fees, any taxes, disconnect fees, safety fencing, things like that. So that's what I was referring to when it was standard industry practice to have those types of things excluded from a quote. Um, and we were obviously well aware of those, those items.
Thank you, Mr. DeJoy. All right. I think all the counselors who wish to speak have spoken. Counselor Franco would like to speak again. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, we have seen renderings of the property and they didn't look like they were in full detail. So I couldn't really tell what the siding would look like or how the windows would look or all these other details. I mean, the rendering is just a concept, right? It's not what it's actually going to look like. Is that correct?
Do you wish Mr. DeJoy to answer or Mr. Reiner?
Whoever would like to answer.
Thank you.
I, I, I can take that one. This is Anthony from Don Mar. So we think that this is going to be a pretty good idea of what it's going to look like. Some things may change. We've gone through about three or four different styles so far, and I think that this was the one that we decided was the best fit for the property. We haven't made a final decision as to what that exact material or the exact color that it's going to be on the outside. But generally, this is the direction that we're going to take the building in architecturally. So it's kind of a blend between something modern and something a little bit traditional.
And is that the same rendering you had at the public hearing?
Yeah, it is. So if you go on the seelyschool.com, you can see a couple of the pictures in there and they're in a little bit more detail. So you can actually see them on the computer. So you'll get a little bit better of an idea than, than the boards and stuff that we had at the meeting.
Right. Cause I didn't see like, um, what you thought like an apartment would look like or what their kitchens would look like. So.
Yeah. So, so those, that's why the, the style of the building is going to change a little bit. Once we start to proceed with this process, we're going to have a market feasibility study done. And what that's going to do is that's going to help us determine what the optimal mix of units are for the building. And once, once we get that optimal mix, it's gonna, it's gonna kind of change the way that the building's laid out slightly. Because we don't have an exact way to fit the apartments in there until we know what style apartments are going to be in there.
Okay. So, so, yeah, cause I mean, the boards that were at the public hearing, I mean, it doesn't give you an actual sense of exactly what it's going to look like. So that's what, those were just the renderings, but more to come is basically what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. These are, these are very early-stage concepts, but it generally, the outside architecture is the direction that we're going to be, uh, be taking it in. As we, as we progress, then it's gonna kind of solidify a little bit and we'll have a better idea of the exact layout of the apartments, the exact sizes and exactly what they're going to look like inside.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DeJoy. I appreciate you calling in tonight. All right. So we will vote on 2021-20 Sealy School Property Option Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Bordelon? So we have, um, we have Franco, Melendez, Heed, Parker, Branatoski, O'Bree in favor, Baumgartner opposed, and Bordelon abstained. It's in favor, one opposed, one abstention. That motion passes. Thank you. We are at eight counselors. Thank you very much, Mr. DeJoy, Mr. Callahan, and Mr. Montesin, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
To you guys.
Thank you, you too.
All right, we are on to 2021-5913 Ford Hill Road Land Transfer. And I believe we are on Counselor Franco.
Yes. I'm sorry, hold on just a second. 13 Ford Hill Road Land Transfer. Resolution referring the transfer of 1,329 square feet of land to 13 Ford Hill Road LLC to the Planning and Commission under CGS Section 8-24. Whereas in October 1992, the Town of Groton transferred a small parcel of land on the south end of the Chronic Bridge Volunteer Fire Company property at 13 Ford Hill Road. And whereas the Chronic Bridge Volunteer Fire Company sold the 13 Ford Hill Road property and the strip of land automatically reverted to the town ownership. And whereas the, the owners, 13 Ford Hill Road LLC have asked the town to quitclaim the land to them. And whereas the proposal to sell or transfer land, public land must be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission per CGS 8-24. Now be it resolved that the town council refers the transfer of the property to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review per CGS 8-24. I so move.
Second, Heed.
Thank you. By Franco and seconded by Heed. And I would just remind everybody that this is on the referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission as per the Connecticut general statutes.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, please, Mr. Burt.
And John Reiner is available too, if you have any questions. I know Counselor Franco has asked for some history on this property. The COVID, as well as the school bonds and ratings process and the budget have just made us, so the finance department has not had any time. I'm sorry. But, um, again, this would not commit anything, account anything. It's just, it's a simple question. Hey, if we sold this, would that fit into our plan? And so there's no real action taken.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. And I'm not seeing any hands. So we will vote on 2021-5913 Ford Hill Road Land Transfer. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Counselor Franco, can you unmute? Are you opposed?
Opposed, thank you.
Any abstentions? Your abstentions. So that passes seven in favor, one opposed Franco, and zero abstentions. We are on to 2021-60 Appointment of Other Attorneys. And I believe we are on Counselor Heed, please. Oh, wait a minute.
All right. So I'll make a motion.
Mr. Burt, do we have, that's on my agenda, but I don't have a motion for that? Or did I just not get it printed?
Or the, which one are we on?
My agenda has 2021-61 Appointment of Other Attorneys, but I don't have it in my packet. I have Children First Groton next.
There should have been one.
I don't see it either.
I think it's wait to the next time. That's fine. Lisa must not have included it.
Okay. So then we are not going to 2021-61. We are instead going to 2021-751 Children First Groton Collaborative Grant. Check page 26. Ours is not paginated. Yeah, I don't, I don't have it tabbed. I usually tab too, and I didn't, I didn't find it when I tabbed. Counselor Heed, if you could go to 2021-751, please.
Sure. Resolution authorizing the Superintendent of Schools to execute the contract between the Connecticut Council for Philanthropy and Groton Public Schools to receive grant funding in the amount of $20,600. Refer the matter to the RTM 6.5.3. Whereas Children First Groton and School Readiness Council were recently awarded grant funding in the amount of $20,600 from the Connecticut Early Childhood Funder Collaborative. And whereas the grant will assist in focusing on the expansion of the Children First Groton and School Readiness Council Collaborative Leadership Group to be more diverse and broaden the representation reflective of the community. And whereas by successfully partnering with underrepresented groups such as parents, military families, and faith-based members, along with increasing the number of residents participating, Children First Groton and School Readiness Council will strengthen the effectiveness, depth, and scope of the work resulting in collaborative resulting in a collaborative that represents the diverse population of Groton. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mike Grenier, and to execute the contract agreement between the Connecticut Council for Philanthropy as the fiscal sponsor for the Connecticut Early Childhood Funder Collaborative and the Groton Public Schools as the fiscal sponsor for the Children First Groton School Readiness Council Collaborative and to receive the grant funding in the amount of $20,600. I so move.
Parker second. Please, please add refer to RTM 653 to your vote.
Yeah, to the RTM 6.5.3, I so move.
Parker second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. Thank you very much.
I'm going to see this.
I'm sorry. I'm hearing a voice, but I'm not seeing a hand. Okay, I see no discussion. So we will vote on 2021-75 Children First Groton Collaborative Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight in favor. Thank you. We are on to 2021-881, 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act. And I think we are on to Counselor O'Bree.
Okay. Resolution to approve the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal for the Bill Memorial Library, Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Sacred Heart Church, Groton Housing Authority, Fairview, and Avery Court Museum. Whereas the Town of Groton has received proposals from the Bill Memorial Library, Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Sacred Heart School, Groton Housing Authority, Fairview, and Avery Court Museum for the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act. And whereas the Town of Groton Department of Planning and Development Services received a proposal from each of these entities to act, to achieve tax credit savings on any energy efficiency and energy conservation projects. And whereas the Town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services supports the proposals from each of these entities and acknowledges that the post-program review will be their responsibility. And whereas the town council held a public hearing on the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act applicants on May 5th, 2020. And whereas the Town of Groton Town Council supports the proposal from each of these entities, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the proposal for the Bill Memorial Library, Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Sacred Heart School, Groton Housing Authority, Fairview, and Avery Court Museum for the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act. I so move.
I second the right honorable gentle lady.
Thank you.
Seconded by Baumgartner, rather formally, but that's wonderful.
Counselor, the online package that's posted on our website does have the resolution. So I don't know why the one we have does not. Lisa checked one she sent out and it had it. So I don't know, two versions went out. So I don't know if you, I don't think we're, we're going to have to have a special meeting in the next, before the 25th for the tax options.
May I interrupt, sir?
Oh, sure.
Let's, let's go to that after we get through this vote, please.
Oh, sorry. I thought, I was looking it up. I thought you voted. Sorry about that.
No, thank you. Um, so, so we are on the Neighborhood Assistance Act. It was moved by O'Bree, seconded by Baumgartner. And I am not seeing any hands. So we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved unanimously, eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Mr. Burt, did you want to talk to us about that now, sir?
Sure. Um, it's in the online pack. Um, I don't know why the one that got emailed out. The latest one didn't have it. So I don't know if you want, you know, I could read it out myself or else just hold it. We're going to have to have a special meeting before the 25th to adopt one of the options on the tax, either the deferral or the 3%. We could, uh, we could put it on that same meeting if you wanted. It's not a huge deal. It has to wait a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'd prefer that because
That's, that's fine.
Be able to take a good look at and ask questions. Thank you. So we are going to Counselor Melendez for 2021-891 Affordable Housing Plan Grant, please.
Am I being skipped? I was next.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bordelon.
Well, no, Melendez is fine. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon, would you like to take this one?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. I make a motion, a resolution adopting the Fair Housing Action Plan for 2020-23. Whereas the Congress of the United States in 1866, the 1866 Civil Rights Act 42 USC.
We have a revised motion.
Okay. Let me pull that up. Sorry.
That's okay. You'll like this one better. It's much shorter.
Do you know what time moves? Oh, I got it. Okay.
Maybe somebody else skipped it.
That's fine. Council Boardland, did you want to jump in or?
I'm fine, thanks. I have it open.
Thank you.
Resolution authorizing submission of an application to the State Department of Housing for planning and grant funds to prepare and adopt an affordable housing plan. Whereas the State Department of Housing, DOH, offers competitive funding for municipalities under 50,000 persons to apply for planning grant funds to prepare and adopt an affordable housing plan under the provision of State Statute 8-30J. And whereas the program is an opportunity to receive a maximum of $15 million. And whereas the town is obligated by state statute to produce a plan prior to 2022. And whereas the town staff recommends undertaking a proactive planning process to establish a strategy for meeting the housing needs of existing and future residents of town. Now therefore be resolved that Town Council authorizes Town Manager Jumper or his authorized representative to submit an application to the State Department of Housing for the Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistant Grant. I so move.
Second.
Mr. Burt, could you just verify the dollar amount on that, please?
John Reiner is here. I'll let John Reiner verify.
Mr. Reiner, could you verify the dollar amount, please?
It's $15,000.
Council Franco, would you like to adjust your motion?
Can I just say that there's an additional zero then after the, the decimal? I have three zeros after the decimal. I thought it was comma. So it's 15,000.
15,000. Moved by Franco. Is there a second?
Seconded by Boardland.
Seconded by Boardland. Thank you. And I see no hands. So we will vote on 2021-89 Affordable Housing Plan Grant to receive a maximum of $15,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. And that is all the items on the agenda, so we are at other business.
May I ask a quick question? Can we just take up the town attorneys? I mean, it was sent out in an email by Lisa. I mean, we've, it's already gone through Cow.
No information has changed from it. It's just a standard practice of reappointing them. You know, they're the bond counsel and the school attorneys, that type of thing. And it did go through Cow. We discussed it there.
I think it'll be fine. We have, we have.
We need to.
The information in our heads.
Well, we need to have the resolution, and Mr. Burt cannot read it, so.
Oh, I, oh.
I have it in front of me as well.
Lisa just reset it to everyone.
Okay, let me get, let me get in there. Great. Scrolling and scrolling.
Juan, do you have that one?
Let me see.
Good one.
I've got it if you want me to read it.
Let's give everybody a chance to get there, please.
All right.
Is anybody in a minute? Are we comfortable? I'm not seeing any objection. Council, I'd like to go ahead, please.
All right, let's see. I will make a motion, resolution pointing with other attorneys as recommended by the town attorney. Whereas the town.
Give me one second. Council Heed, there's, I'm hearing conversation in the background. Okay, would you, would you go again, please? Thank you.
Make a resolute motion to pass a resolution appointing other attorneys as recommended by the town attorney. Whereas the town charter at 8.2.2 provides the town attorney may, with the approval of the town council, appoint attorneys to perform specialized services. Assistant attorney. And whereas the town attorney is empowered by the charter to amend the terms of employment of such attorneys, therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the recommendation of Town Attorney Dugan, the following attorneys may be appointed and continue to serve in the assignments indicated under terms prescribed by the town attorney until such time as their replacements may be approved by the town council. Board of Education Attorneys from Beckham, Moses, and Devlin. Do I need to read all the names?
Yes, please.
All right, Floyd Dugas, Paula Anthony, Eric Barber, John Khalil, Jennifer Chazinski, Rebecca Goldberg, Michelle Loben, Chris Sugar, Christine Sullivan, bond counsel from Day Pitney LLP, Judith Blank, Doug Gillette, Namita Shaw, Richard Wasserman, Glenn Grebaki, Emily Kagan, Kristen Burgess. I so move.
Thank you, Council Heed. Is there a second?
Second, Franco.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the appointment of the attorneys? And as you all stated, we've discussed this before in Committee of the Hull. Seeing none, all those in favor of 2021-61 Appointment of Other Attorneys, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. So now we are at other business. Do any councillors have other business that they'd like to raise? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second, Parker. Moved by Bumgardner and seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:31. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Burt. Thank you for town staff for being with us. And thank you, Mr. Greeley. Be safe and keep your distance, people.